Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to a meeting of the Clackamas County Commissioners. And would you please rise and follow me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Krupp?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead and do the role. I do want to introduce for county council today, we have Mr. Stephen Madcor. And of course, our serving as our clerk to the board is Mary Rathke. I'll go ahead and start with a roll with Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Humberts.
Here.
Yes, and of course, the Chair Bernard is out of the office this week and not available, which is why you're serving as Chair, Mr. Chair.
For those who might be interested, Chair Bernard's representing the county at a Water and Environmental Services Conference, and he'll be back next week. So, thank you.
Before we go into...
Do we have a presentation?
Yeah, before we go into the formal agenda, I did want to take a quick moment, some liberties here, because next week, Tuesday, the 31st will mark the very last day that this individual will be a county employee. We have Mark Gonzalez, who has served as the Director of our Department of Finance since January of 1995, and actually has been serving citizens of Clackamas County for nearly 34 years, is retiring. And of course, his, in addition to what's been an outstanding contribution here to county government and the citizens that rely on us for the things that we do, Mark's also served in a role of serving the state as the past president and past board member, the Oregon Government Finance Officers Association. And of course, he's been given honorary life membership there with that organization. And he's been a member of the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for nearly 30 years. What's really notable is that Mark just completed a stint of serving as the President of the Government Finance Officers Association, which is technically, it's an international organization. So, that's quite an honor to have served in that particular capacity. I think it says something, too, about our team here at Clackamas County, that Mark was able to serve not just Clackamas County, but the country and other countries as well, advancing the practice of good government finance. So, he's, of course, he's been involved with I don't know how many budgets here, in addition to serving as the Director of Administering Operations. He had a Bachelor of Arts degree in Business Administration and Accounting from Portland State University, but he's also an Oregon Duck, receiving his MBA from the University of Oregon. He has served six terms as a citizen volunteer on the Multnomah County's Investment Advisory Board. And I just got to say, he's been, for me here in the past five years, that I've had the pleasure and honor to be able to work with Mark. He's been an invaluable advisor and support, making sure that the resources of the finance department are there to be able to help your county administrator do the work that I need to do to bring forth a budget and see that it's all carried out. And I just wanted to thank Mark for that. Of course, his last official day will be Tuesday of next week, and we do have an opportunity to celebrate his better than three decades of service here in the early evening on Monday. But Mark, I just wanted to thank you and give you an opportunity, in the eyes of the citizens you've served, to be acknowledged for your service.
Well, thank you, Don. Thank you. I didn't expect to have my whole curriculum vitae recited, but that's very nice of you to do so. Thank you. It has been a long time. It doesn't seem like a long time to me, but 33 years and nine months just kind of slipped by. And during that time, you know, Clackamas County has gone from being a relatively quiet government here, out here on the south side, and gotten more and more active in the region and in the state, and become more important, I think, in the role that we play. Really glad to be part of that. Don is my sixth boss here. I've served with all the county administrators that the county has ever had, so seen a lot of changes. Life has offered me a lot of opportunities here. I think right now, we're in a period of really great new energy for the county and moving forward with a lot of ideas and a lot of programs. So, to leave at this point, it feels like I'm kind of on top of a wave, which has been great. So, I thank you. I did bring some notes that I wanted to make a few remarks, and I hope that this won't take more than half an hour. Actually, this is something, one of the things that happens when you leave after a long career, if you have an office, if you're lucky enough to have an office, which I've had for many years, you have a lot of stuff in your office. And so, you start going through it and getting rid of it. And I found this item, just in case the idea of annexing the city of Gresham ever comes up again, I have a full fiscal study from 1998.
You can use that.
Yes, I thought you might be able to use it. It's incredible, some of the things that have happened and some of the changes that have happened, I've seen a lot of it go by. So, it's been my pleasure to be here. Thank you. Thank all of you.
Mark, I would like to say, as one of the new guys on the block here, that any time I have called your office, both you and your staff have been extraordinarily helpful. As folks that have only been here a year and a half, we have a lot to learn, and the support that we've received from you and your staff is very much appreciated. So, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I'm very lucky to have a great staff.
Mark, I'd just like to echo Commissioner Humberson's points there and say thank you for your service. And I do have one curious question on the Gresham thing. That was initiated really, they were seeking to leave Multnomah County, is that correct?
Yes, let's leave Multnomah County and be annexed by Clackamas County and just join our wonderful world. So, that didn't come to pass, as you're aware.
Yeah, I lived in Gresham at the time, so I remember that very clearly.
I wouldn't mind seeing the study, and I'm happy to meet with Mayor Bemis to see what...
Well, oddly enough, the first person from Oregon who was the president of the GFOA, Bonnie Kraft, served as city manager at the time. And I have the honor of following her and four other Oregonians in that role. So, that was a great run for Clackamas County and for Oregon.
Thank you.
Well, if there's no other comments, I think one more round of applauses due you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As always, Clackamas County is an award-winning county, and we received several achievement awards from the National Association of Counties. And I want to have our Public and Government Affairs gentlemen here, Todd Logan, to talk about these awards, their meaning, and we have the departments who help make them happen here as well. So, Todd, the floor is yours. I'll go right ahead.
Thank you, Don. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Todd Logan with Public and Government Affairs. The National Association of Counties unites America's 3,069 county governments. The Association provides a venue for county governments to share ideas and collaborate on ways to improve the services we provide. Each year, they present the NACO Awards. The NACO Achievement Awards Program seeks to recognize innovative county government programs. Programs are judged on innovation, creativity, measurable results, effectiveness, and enhanced levels of citizen participation in their local government. This year, Clackamas County received four 2018 Achievement Awards. We've got representatives from each of the four awarded programs that I've asked to be here to give you a brief overview, and then I'd like to get a group photo if you're willing. So, to lead off, we have Ed Nieto, and he shepherded the Water and Environment Services Information and Education Program for Water and Environment Services Programs.
Good morning, Commissioners Administrator. Thank you so much for allowing us to share with you some of the details about these campaigns. If I may, I'd like to extend a Clackamas County welcome to my mother and stepfather, who are visiting from Nevada today. They're here with us in the audience, sitting in the front row.
Welcome.
Thank you. The impetus for the campaign stemmed from the necessity to educate Wes customers, partners and stakeholders, about the urgent need for building additional, as you know, solid handling capacity, which is required to avoid a possible building moratorium in the county. In late 2015, Wes commissioned a survey to gauge customer awareness of Wes, its mission, its priority products, projects, excuse me. Survey results revealed that while 94% of customers approved of wastewater treatment services, only 14% could correctly identify Wes as their service provider. Confusion about service providers partly stemmed from the fact that Wes ratepayers receive their monthly bills from the cities that are wholesale customers of Wes, like Gladstone, Oregon City, and West Lynn. Another key part of the survey revealed that nearly half of the customers preferred to learn about their services from experts in the field, rather than appointed spokespeople, thus providing the idea for the Meet the Wes Experts video series. The videos were designed to raise awareness of Wes, its dedication to protecting public health, the environment, and future economic growth, and of course, also the great need for the infrastructure upgrade. The videos featured a wide array of Wes experts, ranging from a customer service specialist to the capital projects manager and a member of the operations crew. All proved to be charismatic and articulate ambassadors for Wes. The videos aired in a variety of channels, including the cable channel, YouTube, social media, website, as well as during Wes presentations to business alliances, chambers of commerce, CPOs, rotary clubs, and various community groups. The videos also featured the Wes URL, which helped drive viewers to the Wes webpages to learn more about Wes and our projects. The result was an increase in awareness of Wes and its priority projects, and also measurable increases in visits to the Wes webpages. From January 2017 to January 2018, the number of unique views to the Wes pages increased by 62%, thanks to these and other outreach efforts. From PGA, I'd like to especially thank Garrett Teague and Tim Hyder for their stellar work on this project, in addition to Amy Kyle and Gary Schmidt for their support and guidance. Thanks also to producers Darren Averman, Nicole Kuhn, and Ryan Garrus. From Wes, I'd like to thank the following experts for their outstanding performances: Greg Irley, Lynn Chicoine, Patrick Leach, Patty Hutchison, Amy Willman, Blake Rains, John Nagy, and Matt Zack. Thank you very much.
Does any Commissioners have any questions?
Questions?
Congratulations.
The next one we have is Gary Johnson, also from Water and Environment Services, and the Keep the Wipes Out program.
I just wanted to thank Judge Darling, a retired judge, and Commissioner Sonia Fisher for getting the message out about targeting new parents, taking their children home for the first time, and educating them on keeping wipes out of our pipes. Seems so trivial that a small little wipe could cause so many problems in our urbanized areas worldwide, but we need to be very mindful that a toilet is not a trash can. And this campaign, it features a really cute little baby, and it targets new parents, and which is unique. We spoke with a number of our national associations, and they were not aware of any campaign that targeted new parents. So, a little seed grew, and it became the Wipes Out Campaign, featuring a very cute little baby, who is one of our staff's new children. And also, it was picked up by the local newspaper and featured in a story. So, I just wanted to thank everybody for all their help, especially the Children, Youth and Families, Healthy Families Division, and all of those who were instrumental in getting the information into the packets that were in the hands of the new parents, and all of our jurisdictions and Wes customers who put this information within their bills and got the message out to all their customers, too. So, thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions? I have one. Have you seen a reduction?
We actually have put less effort into changing the mechanical pumps that have to tear up the wipes. And so, there are improvements, getting the word out, but we still battle it daily. We're still working so hard to make sure that we can grind these up. I don't think people really realize that it's not just the infrastructure that's being ruined all over the place, but our pipes as well, in your homes, can clog, and you'll have backups within your homes, which affect your neighbors. So, if we can just spread the word, don't flush wipes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next award recipient, Deidra Landon with DTD, and the program was working with stakeholders to streamline transportation system development charges.
Okay. Is this on? Yes. Okay. My name is Deidra Landon, and I'm the Administrative Services Manager for the Department of Transportation and Development. Thank you all for having me here today. So, transportation system development charges are not the most exciting thing in the world for most people to talk about. So, I do want to make sure to be clear that NACO did not, in fact, give us an award for the fact that we charge these fees, as most jurisdictions around the nation charge these fees. What we were lucky enough, I think, to receive this award for was the unique approach that we chose to take when we did our most recent update. We really wanted to make sure to do it differently. Historically, when people go through these plans, they, you'll have different stakeholder workgroups, you'll have staff at a table, you'll have stakeholders at a table, but definitely with the system development charges, you've never had those people at the same table, which I thought was a missed opportunity. I thought it was really important for the development community to sit down with our staff and understand the needs from both sides. And then, as we were having the discussions, we could balance what the best decision at each point might be. So, that's really what we ended up receiving an award for, was just that different approach to our process. So, in addition to that, it's been impossible historically to get the public involved in any type of outreach we try to do before the process is over. So typically, what happens is you'll go to issue a permit after you've adopted a new plan, and everybody's like, when did this happen? I didn't know what's going on. And we were able to identify a way using emails through our permitting system, as well as working with the Home Builders Association, to do a targeted email list to about 1,600 different developers that we knew did work within our county, to let them know about a virtual open house we were doing. And we, out of that effort, received about 275 responses, which I know is not earth-shattering in many cases, but when it comes to system development charges, we were pretty darn impressed with how many people gave us that feedback. So, we were able to use the feedback from those 275 people, go back to our workgroup, and finalize our plan recommendations before we brought them to the board. So, when the board did adopt the new plan, which was back in December of 2017, it's not uncommon, I don't know about Clackamas County specifically, but generally in jurisdictions, it's not uncommon to have some people there to testify, maybe less than favorably, on the adoption of these different plans. We had one person in our audience that day, and it actually was a representative from the Portland Metro Home Builders Association. And he both testified orally and put a letter into the record to not only support the process, but suggest that other jurisdictions might also look to our process as a benchmark when they decide to do their updates in the future, which I thought was very, we were very thankful for their support throughout the process, and we were very pleased that they were willing to do that as well. So, really, in closing, as we were preparing to embark on a very small update of, or review, I guess, of our system development charges, we want to look at our residential rates. And I am hopeful that we can go back to the process that worked so well about a year ago and engage some of those parties upfront to make sure they understand the decisions and the discussions that are happening as part of this upcoming small review as well.
Any questions?
Well, I just want to just acknowledge, I've had a number of opportunities to work with Deidra in the past, and I think her ability to work a spreadsheet and understand SDCs and getting in the weeds, one smart cookie there, so I really appreciate your work and your effort.
Thank you.
Well, I have to say that to get complimented by the Home Builders Association over the issue of SDCs, that is a heck of a hurdle to get across. And I really have to compliment you for having done that. I'll just leave it at that. I just think that's remarkable. So, I thank you for the work that you did.
And Clackamas County, we care a lot about trust in government, and this is exactly how we do that. And it's very nice that it is being recognized, because there's a lot of skeptical people out there that get real frustrated, but when you involve them in the process, you yield much better results. So, hats off to you, and hats off to Clackamas County and this board, and the former board that put together our Performance Clackamas and keeps us focused. So, great work. Thank you.
Our fourth awardee, Kimberly Lippert, and from the Sheriff's Office with Drive With a Cop.
Is this mic, it's working too? Good. I'm Kim Lippert with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, and I'm here today to thank everyone for NACO awarding us with the Drive With a Cop Award. And I'm going to go ahead and pass it off to Sheriff Roberts.
Hi, I'm Sheriff Craig Robertson. Seat to my left is Alisa Krebs. And the NACO Award, before I get started, I just want to say that these are the two shining stars that make so many things happen at our office, and want to talk about incredible work that they've done as well. But Drive With a Cop, I just have to tell you, started really as a result of the tragedies in fatal car crashes of our teenagers. And we could sit back and respond to those situations, but one of the things that we decided to do is try and get ahead of this. And nationally, if you look at the statistics, it's just terrifying to see the number of kids that die from oftentimes very simple accidents. And what we saw is the impact it was having on law enforcement, the community, and one of the things that we brought together was bringing law enforcement and teenagers together to better educate our youth about driving. As a former driving instructor for law enforcement, we have many of the same things we want to teach our youth, which is collision avoidance, you know, emergency stopping, the things to, really, that can keep you alive in a tragedy situation responding. So, we first partnered with Grace Chapel out in Wilsonville. First year, we actually had an amazing turnout. We had to turn folks away. We finally moved up to Portland International Raceway. We partnered with the Oregon State Sheriff's Association, who's been a huge supporter, State Farm Insurance, and Oregon Impact. And as many of you know, we had a tragedy in Clackamas County, Maddie Higgins over there, it was a fatal car crash, and her mother and relatives have all really stepped up to help support this. And one of the things that they carried forward was Angel Five, and it was to remember five teenagers killed in our county. And she comes and speaks at the event and encourages other youth to really think about their driving, because some of those actions can be life-lasting. And ever since we've been able to do this, we've really, across Oregon, other sheriffs and chiefs have replicated the program. And I can just tell you, it wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for these two young ladies that really spearheaded it, reached out to the community, and made it all happen. So, want to thank these two for their incredible work. Thank you.
Questions anybody? Once again, the Sheriff's Department gets acknowledged for thinking ahead. So, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Kim.
I waited until all the awards were given to mention that, of all the counties in the state of Oregon, we received the most awards for innovation. And it became very clear to me, because I was at NACO, when you look at the list, we were number one. So, thank, obviously, across the spectrum. So, I want to thank everyone out there for understanding that when we innovate here, we actually have a duty and a responsibility to make sure that the rest of our colleagues, not only in our state but across the nation, understand that we're leaders in best practices in innovation and doing things better for our constituents. So, thank all of you for that, and I hope we continue the trend of being the top winners of all the counties in the state of Oregon. I'll have to mention that to them and see if we might, we might want to move them on to give us a little more competition there, you know? So, anyway, thanks again.
Well, I understand that we're supposed to do a little photo op with our reward, award recipients?
Yes, please. Get everybody to come down.
If everyone wants to come forward up here with your awards?
Squish. Three, two, one. One more. Very good. All right, thank you, everybody. Just a second. Oh.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Should we have one more applause?
Do it. One more applause.
How about one more applause? Those folks are kind of...
Yay, good job tonight!
And we will move on to Citizen Communication, and we have one Citizen Communication today, Les Poole. Les, if you want to come on up.
Well, good morning. Les Poole, I live in Gladstone. I'll bet most of you know why I'm here. And for those that don't, yesterday, there was an article that was put out by the Portland Tribune that makes it clear that myself and others are very, very concerned about the state's approach to tolling. I'm now a chief petitioner on a statewide measure that will require a public vote on tolling. And there's some confusion about what's going on out there. We're not here to prohibit tolling. Tolling has historically been used to finance projects. By the way, current federal law certainly allows tolling to build things, not opposed to that. The federal law doesn't allow them to toll existing infrastructure, existing bridges and things arbitrarily, I'll use the word arbitrarily. Also, one considers how much money would be taken from citizens' pocketbooks, and how much money would be added, would be added to the delivery costs for all our food and products, because those tolls would be much, much higher for trucks. We need to address our transportation priorities in Oregon, and I'll just conclude very simply by saying, the current proposal for tolling is not the answer. I'll be very busy, I'm putting my life on hold, I'm happy to do it, I believe that strongly about it. As you know, I've been involved in transportation issues with the county here, I can't say as long as Mark Gonzalez, but I've been doing it for a while. So, we will be making a press release today, and I certainly will be sending a letter and some things and details to the county and all the local governments, so that everyone understands exactly what we're doing. We'll have a webpage up today, we're making some last-minute changes, folks will be able to go online and sign the petition. And the good thing about this, quite frankly, is this is an issue that is not partisan. This is a practical issue that I think we have a tremendous agreement on. So, please go to the Vehicle Transportation Alliance webpage, I mean webpage, I'm sorry, the Facebook page, that's the easiest way to take a look at the article and get up to date on what we're doing, and of course, you'll be hearing from me and others in the future. Any quick questions?
I don't have any, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Les.
Les?
That concludes our citizen communication section, our next item is the consent agenda, and I'd ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement with Bridges to Change for Peer Support Services. Approval of Amendment Number One to the Intergovernmental Agreement with Estacada School District for the Teen Mentor Program. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Sandy for Operations for the Mount Hood Express Bus Service. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Disaster Management, approval of Fiscal Year 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant Revised, Amendment Number One with the State of Oregon Office of Emergency Management. And Approval of Fiscal Year 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant, Amendment Number Two with the State of Oregon Office of Emergency Management. Under our Juvenile Department, approval of Amendment Number Nine to the Professional Services Contract with Parrot Creek Child and Family Services to Provide Shelter Services for Youth. Approval of Amendment Number Nine to the Professional Services Contract with Boys and Girls Aid Society of Oregon to Provide Shelter Services for Youth. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Does any one of the commissioners wish to remove or pull any item from the consent agenda? I see Commissioner Fisher, you have a question?
Yeah, so, I'm curious about Number Ten for Parrot Creek, we have in our packet just Amendment Nine of...
Yes?
And without, out of context? I mean, I don't understand the context of what this is.
So, we contract with Parrot Creek to provide professional shelter services between the County Juvenile Department and Parrot Creek, and this is a contract amendment and a renewal to continue that particular service. It's a one-time, only six-month contract extension to provide such care. So, we've had this relationship for some time. This is not affiliated or related to other responsibilities that the county has with respect to the lease and ownership and maintenance of the site. This is simply our juvenile department contracting for specific shelter services for specific things the juvenile department is responsible for doing.
Okay, and just a question, I've read it a few times now, and I'm just not clear exactly what it is amending. Is it amending the amount of money or the time of the contract?
I believe it's extending the contract, and the cost of the extension is $170,000, actually, $175.70 and 73 cents. So, the, that's to add to what is the maximum contract value, up to about $1.8 million. So, this is an existing contract, this would extend the nature of that contract for these services, and the remuneration for that extension is $170,000 or so. Does that help?
Okay, that does help, thank you.
Good, thanks.
Okay, the sheriff will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda, second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. County Administrator update.
Okay, well, I've got a couple of items of good news for you. First, I wanted to share with you some terrific feedback that we received regarding our weatherization program from a resident in Milwaukee, and as you know, this program provides help to residents to reduce their heating and cooling costs and to help make their homes safer and more comfortable. And this is a program provided through our Health, Housing and Human Services Department. We got a very nice communication from one of our residents stating that Clackamas County's weatherization program makes it possible for seniors to be able to afford living in their home and to age in place. They are a credit to the community, and so I just wanted to thank the resident for providing this feedback and say great work to our program staff for providing this excellent service. I also wanted to remind folks that the county offers monthly dental clinics, and these clinics provide, you know, sealants as well as other dental services to uninsured and underinsured individuals and families in our community. We hold these events at our Beaver Creek and Sunnyside Health Clinics, and they are primarily utilized by parents who don't want their kids to miss school. So, I wanted to mention that our staff performs a lot of work around in these clinics to help to provide what is a fun and inviting atmosphere for these kids. Our next Saturday dental event, we've got two of them programmed in August, one for August the 4th at Beaver Creek, and the other at the Sunnyside Clinic on August the 25th. And residents who are interested can call 503-655-8471 to make an appointment. And then, I also wanted to let you know that over the past couple of days, I have participated in interview processes for the consideration of candidates for what would be the first Regional Director for the Extension Services Metro Region. Commissioners received a presentation a couple of weeks ago from the Oregon State University Extension Service about a reorganization of the regional approach, and in this case involving Multnomah, Washington and Clackamas Counties, and creating a, they would create a region that would include those three counties, and they would have a director hired. So, this was the interview process for the individual who may serve as the first Metro Region Director under this new organization. I can say that they had four great candidates that met with the Extension Service staff, and I was pleased to be able to sit in on that and get to know each of the candidates that are being considered for that. I will say one other thing that's pretty apparent, I, that the services that the extension provides here in Clackamas County are unique and, you know, above the fold, really. The fact that we have a service district that raises funds that are dedicated to providing extension services here in Clackamas County makes a significant difference in the things that we are able to do here than, say, in Washington County and Multnomah County. And I think that one of the opportunities for this region being created is for both Multnomah and Washington County to get a chance to see how effective this has been for us here in Clackamas County. There was also a great interest on the part of the candidates in the work that we're doing to design and then to develop the new building facility for the Extension Service here at, on the Red Soils Campus, looking at cross-laminated timber as a, as a material for that construction, and a recognition that the facility that is being planned for and intended to be constructed here will actually be quite a significant showcase in terms of contribution and capacity for extension services on the West Coast. Just thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp. So, we'll move on to the Commissioner Communication section of our agenda today, Commissioner Savis.
Thank you. Yeah, I think started out our week, for me, with the ribbon cutting for the newly-constructed replacement of the Clackamas Service Center. All of us were present there, it was kind of, I remember my first time going there about almost eight years ago, and it was very, a very heartfelt moment to see what was taking place there as far as feeding, clothing, and helping out a lot of people that are in need. And they were really doing a lot with very little. And the Clackamas Service Center, the board members and so forth, the staff there had done excellent work, and it was also really the place where I actually participated in my first homeless count, and really spent a whole day out over there talking to people that were using those services. And it's in an area where, in Clackamas County, along the 82nd Avenue area, where there's a lot of low-income folks and people that are living on the edge, and some people that are past that, where they really don't have a home. So, a lot of good work, and I, my congratulations to the Clackamas Service Center Board and Deborah Mason, their person running that operation, did a fantastic job in a year's time. As some of you may not know, they experienced a fire a year ago, and the building was burned, burned down, and within a year's time, they managed to put it back together, and it's a very nice facility, a great improvement. Building looks very similar in shape and structure as it did before, and it was great to see the outpouring of people who contributed to the rebuilding of that, and, you know, I know we, Clackamas County, did our efforts in a number of ways to help them, and that was, that was mentioned by Deborah Mason as well. But that was really exciting to see that, that come back. On a more significant note, that kind of impacted me this week, was Tuesday evening, there was a gathering in Jennings Lodge for their annual barbecue, and we were there in the shadows, in the shade, in the shadows of several hundred trees that are just, in very short time, about 350, 300 or so will be cut down, and the buildings on that property will be cut down for a small subdivision that'll be going in there. And so, it was a great day, but somewhat sombering to realize where, what was, what was around us would not be there a year from now. And subsequent to that was Wednesday morning, and with a great discussion with the Economic Development Commission as far as, you know, Clackamas County development, and what we really wanted to see, and where we want to grow or not to grow, and good dialogue. But I made the comment that, and I do this on the heels of a campaign going door-to-door, as I typically do, hearing from a lot of people that moved away from Portland or Multnomah County and moved to Clackamas County for what it is, and we really need to, I've said this before, that, you know, I think I coined this saying, keep Clackamas, Clackamas, but there is something special about our county that really draw lots of people here, that's why they live here. And I think we need to embrace that and cherish that, and not seek to really change that in a way that really harms our neighborhoods and harms the citizens that we're here to serve. And I think if we can focus our development in areas that have the least impact and have the most opportunity, the least impact to our citizens and have the most opportunity to benefit our county, is a wise one, and looking east is far more, I think, beneficial than it is to try to redevelop neighborhoods and displace people. With that, Portland cannot grow, the city of Portland cannot grow its boundaries, they have only one choice to develop, and that's to redevelop. And we're seeing significant negative impacts, and you couldn't watch the news and see the impacts of what that means, and I think a lot of people want us to feel that we, as a commissioner, we as the county ought to do our best to protect the quality of life, preserve the neighborhoods that need to be preserved, and unfortunately, we have to deal with the growth, and deal with the growth in a way that is beneficial and has the least impacts. And I'm hoping that our discussions and our focus of looking towards the corridor, the Sunrise Corridor, where we, where those opportunities exist, both for jobs, both for housing, both for development, can occur, and occur with benefit and very little negative impact. So, and last evening, to cap it off, was another discussion about some land use applications in which more neighborhoods are being impacted negatively as a result of development. I think those development pressures, absent some opportunity east, we need to relieve that pressure, and I, you know, it was very sombering again to hear people upset last evening about those kinds of developments that are occurring, and it's definitely a person's right to develop their property, and I think there's no way that we're suggesting we impede that, but I think we need to address those pressures and allow that to go where it is most beneficial to folks, and allow, allow that to take place again where there is no detriment. But I'll leave it there and focus on trying to keep Clackamas the great county that it is. That's what I have for today's.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Vice Chair Humberston. I want to piggyback on the wonderful presentations today for our NACO awards and share a little bit more about Wipeout. So, Gary Johnson did a great job in explaining the history of this, but I just want to embellish it just a little bit. So, Judge Deanne Darling, who retired pretty recently as our juvenile court judge in Clackamas County, called me up one day and said, "I've done an informal survey of the new mothers that are clerks in the courthouse, and they do not know that they are not supposed to flush baby wipes, and we need to do something about this." Well, the process is as simple as having a conversation with Dronda Howard, my policy coordinator, to say, "I got this call from Judge Darling, what do you think we can do?" And she says, "Well, I'll look into it." And lo and behold, it activated all of the different partners in Clackamas County, and it came up with this campaign, which has gone national, and it's quite a tribute to one person, Judge Deanne Darling, calling a county commissioner who talks to a very skilled policy adviser...
to folks and allow that to take place again where there is no detriment. But I'll leave it there and focus on trying to keep Clackamas the great county that it is. That's what I have for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Vice Chair Humberston. I want to piggyback on the wonderful presentations today for our NACO awards and share a little bit more about Wipeout. So Gary Johnson did a great job in explaining the history of this, but I just want to embellish it just a little bit. So Judge Deanne Darling, who retired pretty recently as our juvenile court judge in Clackamas County, called me up one day and said, "I've done an informal survey of the new mothers that are clerks in the courthouse, and they do not know that they are not supposed to flush baby wipes, and we need to do something about this." Well, the process is as simple as having a conversation with Dronda Howard, my policy coordinator, to say, "I got this call from Judge Darling. What do you think we can do?" And she says, "Well, I'll look into it." And lo and behold, it activated all of the different partners in Clackamas County, and it came up with this campaign, which has gone national. And it's quite a tribute to one person, Judge Deanne Darling, calling a county commissioner who talks to a very skilled policy advisor and gets the wheels of government moving. It reminds me back years ago when I went to a children's theater production about... and there was a little song about getting on the path. You need to get on the path. And it was all these little examples for children about what they can do to help promote good practices. And a lot of it had to do with, you know, turning off the water when you're in the middle of brushing your teeth and making sure that you throw things... you don't use things unnecessarily. And it's all about what we do as individuals to get on the path. Well, we in Clackamas County, through all of our efforts, get on the path every day, and I just want to encourage folks to think about what we do and all that we do, whether it's bringing our own cup to work so that we're not using paper cups. Very good. Let the TV reflect that Chair Humberston picked up his coffee cup. Whether it's simple things as not using disposable straws, we know that those are difficult for the environment. Turning off the lights when we're not using them. Not keeping the air conditioning running in ways that uses up energy. Making sure that we do our part every single day to walk the walk, to get on the path. And I'm so proud of Clackamas County to say that we are on the path, and we listen, and we make progress on things that are important. So those are my comments for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Schrader?
Great. Well, to mention Commissioner Fisher again, she knows that we are... we're dusting off our sustainability initiative in the county, and we have been a leader in actually building, if not the first, one of the first green campuses here in the United States because our buildings are, I think, LEED certified, I believe silver, maybe gold. I'd have to check the... I'd have to check the size of the building to see what level we're certified to, and that we are committed that as we expand this campus with the new courthouse, hopefully in the future, that we will follow a similar pathway and hopefully be using things like cross-laminated timber. And also, as we move forward with our Extension Service, to do a new building again, do it in a green, sustainable way and model this. And somewhere, there's a NACO award in there. So let's think about that, Dawn. Somewhere there's a NACO award. In any case, I had a pretty full week. I had an opportunity to do a boat tour of the Upper Willamette with Catherine Farrell. And the reason Catherine asked me to go was evidently there have been some real, again, environmental issues going on with concerns with wakeboarding and the bank erosion that seems to be associated with that. And I mentioned that to Commissioner Savis this morning, who says that, yes, indeed, he gets all those kinds of... being closer to the Lower River, that also seems to be an issue. So I did some research. There is a legislative group, I believe Caron Power is involved with it, or was involved with some legislation, looking at the policy gaps with wakeboarding and seeing, okay, what do we need to do to allow people to recreate on the river, but also, you know, get the word out that some of the waiting down of these boats with the intent of causing really big waves also has an environmental impact. And since we have such a... the river is kind of our lifeline here in more ways than one. Need I mention the Legacy Project and the Unlock the Locks Project? That I do think that we need to maybe potentially get a briefing on this and start looking at it as a policy, a policy look at that. So that was... and it was significant. We actually took the boat up to Representative Kennaner's house, and he was very delighted to see us and actually pointed out where all the erosion was happening at his place. So good work. Went all the way up to Wilsonville, came home, and it was a nice way because it was a very, very hot day. It was really pleasant to be on the river that afternoon and really realized we have another policy issue we're going to have to address here. Also went to the Jennings Lodge Community Picnic. It was very fun. Had some good fried chicken and veggies. Attended MPAC last night, where we are, you know, looking at the regional transportation plan, and we'll be doing an advisory vote on the urban growth boundary expansion in September. This is the first time that we have used the urban-rural reserves process for the analysis of an urban growth boundary expansion. And it seems to be working very snusely. It connects our cities more to the process where they have to come up with a plan of how they're going to manage infrastructure for urban growth boundary expansion with the governance intact. So more on that as we keep looking at that. Regards to the regional transportation plan, talking to Mayor Russ Axelrod, one of the things he pointed out to me was these big initiatives we have on the Willamette River, the Falls Legacy Project, as well as the Unlock the Locks. So far, the transportation piece of it, Commissioner Savis, has not necessarily been included in the RTP yet. So I did ask DTD, and I wanted to get that material to you, to just give me the outline of what that process is. You probably know it off the top of your head, actually. But it's a real nexus of transportation and land use, and as these projects move forward, we're going to have to be cognizant of what the transportation impacts are, and I think we're going to have to get them on the RTP. So I just wanted to point that out and hope that it's another way for us to collaborate and integrate land use and transportation. Went to the Clackamas Service Center. It was wonderful to see them have their new facility there that will help people. I'm actually having lunch with Jane Leo tomorrow, and the reason I'm having lunch with her is she is very interested in housing, and she's the executive director of the Portland Metropolitan Association of Realtors. And she is very interested in helping students who are homeless find housing, and she wanted to talk to me about a model that they've worked on in Tacoma, Washington. So I will bring that back to the board. I'm very grateful that Jane pointed this out to me, and she's also a member of our housing discussion that we're having here. Alrighty, so let me go to the word of the day. I'll get it done here. Laconic. It's an adjective of few words. Did you know? Speech that is concise or terse is laconic. Sally gave a laconic speech about the successes of the library. Okay, arts and culture. Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition presents music of the Oregon Trail with the Trail Band. The Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, in partnership with the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center and the Oregon City Parks and Recreation Department, will present a free outdoor concert by the Trail Band. Food and beverages will be available for purchase from onsite food cart vendors. In addition, a beverage station selling beer or wine, soda, and water will be onsite. That's this Friday, July 27, 6:30 p.m., at the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center in Oregon City. West Lynn Historical Society presents History on Fire Ignite Talk. These rapid and engaging five-minute presentations will share images and stories about local and regional history in the Ignite Talk format. Sunday, July 29, 4 p.m., at the Willamette Ale and Cider House in West Lynn. And to get more information, you can always go to clackamasartsalliance.org.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Well, I had the opportunity to enjoy some of the same events that my colleagues did this week, so I won't repeat them. I do want to address comments I made last week when we had the discussion regarding night meetings to make sure that what I said was not taken out of context. I had commented that I do a lot of going out to CPOs and other organizations and meetings and events and things where I get the opportunity to meet and listen to our citizens about issues that are important to them and share what we're doing with them. That was in no way intended to say that we shouldn't have night meetings in one format or another. I do currently support the board's position on the quarterly meetings and want to see how that's going to work for us. But I also understand that some folks come here at those night meetings so they can speak to the camera, so that the audience that's out there on that camera also hear their message. So it was in no way intended to say that folks shouldn't be able to come here, whether it's day or night, and present their message both to us and to the community at large. That said, I had the pleasure of going to the North Willamette Research and Extension Center open house yesterday. And just to talk a little bit about some of the things they do. In our region, we have over 240-plus crops that we grow and market, both locally and internationally and everywhere in between. The North Willamette Research and Extension Center from Oregon State University does an incredible amount of research on everything from various and sundry flowers that will attract bees, the different species of bees that are available in the area to pollinate our food. They do hybridization of a variety of different crops, especially food crops, that increases yield without necessarily having to use a lot of chemicals to do so. And they work on finding solutions to invasive species, both insect and plant. About 13% of our land in Clackamas County is actually available for agriculture, and so it's... what they do is very important to make sure that we do have a healthy local food source. One of their new programs is called the Beeve Drone Program, Better Than the Eye-Aerial View Field Scouting for Plant Health Protection. What that is, is using drones and special cameras that do multispectral digital imagery. They fly over the fields, and though that multispectral imagery can then tell them the health of the plants, whether the crops are stressed from lack of water or other problems. And that allows them to not only do it more quickly, but more targetedly, and then they're able to address whatever the stresses are on the plants, once again increasing yield in a really positive way. The other two items, we continue to work on the Cross-Laminated Timber Initiative and ISP Initiative, and staff are continuing to work to develop those initiatives and prepare information for my colleagues as we move forward. The last thing I have today, so that Mary doesn't have to tell me and remind me, is the dog. This is Rocky. He is a fine-looking fellow with a goofy disposition. He can walk on a leash. He enjoys playing outside and loves to learn new things. He's eager to please and wants to spend time with human friends. He's a cocker spaniel, so his coat will need consistent grooming, and daily exercise will keep his mind and body healthy. We encourage you to meet him for a playdate to get to know him. For more information about Rocky and other adoptable dogs, please contact the Clackamas County Dog Services at (503) 655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. And that's all I have for today. If no one has anything else, we stand adjourned.